Is Michael Fraser and Michael is actually a repeat in Anubik. He used to work with Parks Canada and he loved Anubik so much, he wanted to come back. So welcome, Michael.
Yeah.
Uh, any complaints about roads or garbage or anything like that can now go again.
They'll vote for you.
And then they'll vote it there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. So uh, once again, welcome, Michael.
Hey, item number six, adoption of the minutes. So first of all, we will have the November twelfth public hearing minutes. Any changes, corrections, anything needed in those? Six one. You see nothing? And then we had the, we need the whole regular council meeting minutes. Any changes needed on any of those or on those minutes? Good seeing them. And then related action items, anything, any new update there Cindy?
Uh, there is no update to the uh, NTVC rates. I'm still waiting to hear back. I've actually tried to reach out to NTVC to see what the twenty twenty six rates are. So at this point, I don't have any further update other than when I do. We will, uh, having said that, we've incorporated into the bu- we've incorporated into the budget. A thirteen percent increase in anticipation that that is what the increase is going to be. And if it's going to be less, then we will take that out of the budget. And then the land, uh, sorry, the land acquisition is dependent on our community plan. And our community plan has, uh, I hand delivered it to Maka. Uh, last Monday, so hopefully they will, they don't anticipate getting back to us till, because they have their own consultation to do. So they won't be back to us probably until the new year for that to uh, to come back to us for third reading.
Good. Any questions, comments from council on any of the actions? Bylaws, item number nine, nine, look, sorry, new business. New business, uh, request for council decision, appoint the NWET Association of Community Delegates. So at this time, we know which councillors.
Oh, I know.
Councillor Merrill was interested. Any other councillors interested in going to the AGM or have time to go to the AGM? Which is the end of February. Don't know, Councillor?
Well, she's going, like, if you're second option, if you want.
But we right now, we budgeted for two councillors to go.
Oh.
So if you're.
You, yes. And I'm under business travel.
Yeah.
I'm under business travel, so Atlanta.
Oh, I'll put my name forward if none of this is interesting, of course.
Okay, so we have.
Your what?
Oh, I said I'm not available.
Yeah, so, so we have Councillor Gillis and Councillor Merrill interested in also attending.
You will also note that it says first and second reading. All it is is a, is a motion. It's not, it's not a bylaw.
Yeah.
So you can just delete the requires motions.
Okay.
Or requires first and second readings.
Right, yes, okay.
Name, Michael Peter.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Good eye, good eye. Um, so that will be just a motion on Wednesday. Any further discussion? Next year, we're hoping everyone can attend because we're hoping to bring it to Anubik. So that'll be an opportunity for everyone to attend. So we will, uh, once we get a little bit more information on that, we will bring it to council for discussion and approval. But at this time, the NWETAC Executive Director Sarah Brown has asked whether Anubik would be interested in hosting it. And in that case, everybody would be able to drop in and see what's going on. All right, nine one, bylaws. Request for council decision to acquire commissioners' land. And then nine two is to dispose of that by way of sale. And we will have a price on uh, nine two by Wednesday. We're still trying to figure out how to measure the, the lot because it's a very irregular shape. And the strategy is to measure the additional um, land that's, that's going to, that's being requested. And then it will be priced based on what the existing land is, based on what proportion it is to the existing land. And um, and then that will be sold to the property owner. Any questions on nine one or nine two? Anything further on that?
No, other than if anybody knows trigonometry, uh, it's been high school for me and remember I still count to my fingers. So it'll be a very rough estimate. We will have it figured out. Daniel's going to be using Albus in the autocad figure for us.
Yeah. That will save. All right. Item number ten. The moment we've all been waiting for is department updates. And we will start with ten one corporate services. And I believe this handout was provided by corporate services. And I'm guessing, yes, the other capital projects report also. Stephen, up to you.
Thank you. Leaving everyone. Because I hope everybody has post reports. I have the centrist area. And then I dropped this on your desk. I'm going to go through them.
The ear clucker should work there. You want me to do it?
Oh, please. Nice. Hey, um. This is the quantitative update. And um, it relates to the, the report that I sent there, the capital project report. And the period cover is up to Friday last week, November twenty one. And these are the highlights, um. As of Friday, November twenty one, um, out of Panama, capital budget of fourteen point zero five million, seven point four million admin spent. An increase of two million from last report. Out of forty five approved projects, uh, sixteen have been completed, three postponed. Five have no expenses recorded yet, while the rest are variously. We spent money, some money that was not budgeted for, uh, not without approvals anyways. Mackenzie Road Drainage Rehabilitation expense of ninety nine thousand dollars. And um, there was a one-off payment that we made, utility door installation project that was completed in twenty twenty four. There was a bill of about seventy thousand that came. They didn't, they did not invoice us before, so it just came in to spite of what you have in your report. The other comments are also. Also in your report. Operating expenses, various report as of November twenty first, twenty twenty five. That was the smaller one I dropped on your desk today. From an overall standpoint, um. Total revenue, what is period in question? Was about six hundred thousand deficit. Total expenses made up for that, we have two point four million surplus. We've not spent. That, um, that amount of budgeted, land, seven, seven thousand surplus. Utilities, uh, four hundred thousand surplus, uh, leaving us right now with a net operating surplus of two point two billion. And the major reasons are overall, we have spent less than budgeted for. And this is over and above the negative variance in our revenue. And it's what I explained in the report, I'll just go through it. So on the revenue side, we have about six notes. Um. And the notes are for, you know, um, percentages over ten. If it's over, if it's less than ten percent, I, I, I don't think bother to make any more points. If it's over ten percent variance, I, whether positive or negative. There is a note. So the first one has been constant, um, the full year target for. For infrastructure revenue or achieved by, uh, the unbudgeted, unbudgeted revenue from NWUTAC. Uh, building inspection incentive that we received. And number two is the deficit revenue from royalty fees and solid waste levy less than expected. We didn't get as much as we thought we would get. We are making some. Some, some recommendations in the new budget concerning how to get more of that. And note three is surplus due to positive variance mainly from AD registration and advance on Anubik guide. So if you look at note four, it says deficit due to less than expected revenue from concession rental, poor rentals and old fees. That's from the. That's for, um. Parks and Recreation. Note five is for the library. Uh, this, uh, due to non-recent of the literary programming contribution of about twenty, twenty four thousand dollars is yet to be received. So. Uh, that's, that's a major reason for that, that, uh, that variance.
So does that mean still, we're still anticipating that coming in?
Yes.
Okay, that's a timing.
Yes, the timing. And um, there's another note six. This is, um. Um, we have O and M here, gas tax for operations and then lottery here as well. And we have a surplus due to timing difference in gas tax, uh, revenue receipt.
Sorry, and just to clarify that Stephen, so in here, it's showing a deficit, but just it's a timing issue, we're anticipating.
Positive deficit.
That deficit will be cleared out and we'll have a surplus in that line?
Yes.
Based on the gas tax, which just hasn't moved up yet?
Yes.
Okay, so it's anticipated to be a surplus, but as of right now, it's showing a deficit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
On the expense side, if you look at all of them, they are all positive. Um, ranging from administration, which is, which is surplus to time indifference also. We have not raised some entries for tax forgiveness and educational requisition. We just got the invoice from the government for the educational requisition, um. Last week, so we're going to process that for our next payroll, uh, check run this week. Usually we, we, we get it from citizens and we, we give it back to the government. We just, we just have the country, we just, it only flowed through for us. And then tax forgiveness as well, we will do the, the entries to begin this month. Protective Services surplus due to many to training, supplies and wide land urban interface positive variances. And the final. And if they are, okay, the libraries, um. Because of course, because revenues have not come in and uh, they have also a surplus in their, in their spending. By, um, the eleven one, utility funds revenue, uh, uh, note eleven. So. Okay, I'll just scroll down. That is, um, I don't have print card phone number back. But at note eleven, utilities, funds revenue, it's, uh. It's, it's, um, so this is departments, this department sixty. So this is usually due to timing difference. For the revenue and it nets off with the. With the expenses, it's, uh, revenue is negative, but the expenses is positive. So there's a net positive of four hundred thousand for, for this, I, for this item. Qualitative updates, what we accomplished. We finished talks on the new accounting software. We had a meeting with, um, the providers. And uh, we finalized, we, we reached a vast stage on that. The price turned out to be higher than we expected. So that negotiation, uh, they, they've said they'll get back to us on that. But we, we are not, we are not ready to pay for that though.
I just might add, if, uh, they can't bring that price down and what our means are, we will. Uh, further investigation into other song where as well, in the interim, we will be in the maze until we can. Come to some kind of agreement with them, or we're going to be looking for something else that is only more within our price range. And uh, we'll, we'll work on.
Yes. We've done, um, a one point five million dollar drawdown on our capital project loan, um, minus a few dollars. We have requested for under one million dollars. What is important?
So if I can add, when we discussed in the budget last year, I believe it was three point seven.
About three point seven.
Um, and just based on the numbers that we have so far, uh, we haven't had to take out three point seven, we're at two point five, right?
Yes.
So what we anticipated, we need, uh, you know, that won't depend on any other bills coming, the big bills from the utility. So, so far, we're, we're taking out less than we thought we'd have.
Just to add, we've got, um, the. The, um, the invoice we sent to, um, the founders. That was also near, so we got the points this week. Yeah. So what's coming up? Um, we're following up on the gas tax fund, we expect the gas tax fund for. To, to be received this month as well. Then paperwork for the, for the additional one million dollars from CIBC is, uh, still being finalized. By the twenty ninth of this month, we have a deadline for repayment of all private taxes, after which interest will kick in. We still expect the major grants in lieu in respect of private taxes from the government this month. Any questions?
Questions from council, comments? Stephen, do we expect the capital project funding, which has the large variances because of the low actuals? Will that balance out before the end of the year? Because we've got fourteen million in spending and only two million in actuals and ten million variance?
Sorry, what line is that?
That's, I don't know, um. It's on, and. Over the page down. Project.
The best.
On this page, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I put a big note there. I said, please note that capital project section is just a balance, just to balance the books. The discussion is based on a separate report, which is this one. So there are some timing issues about the capital funding when we spend. When, when we spend, record the expenses. So until I do a report to Maka and they confirm that my report is in order. And I'll raise an entry to move what we have spent to claiming as we have, I think we have ended. So you find out you have more expenses showing right now than what you have on the revenue side. After Maka approves my report, that I, I do the revenue entry. But so is the timing difference really? You know. When, when we, it's not, it's not related to the, the funding, the funds have come, when the funds come, we'll put them on a reserve account. Because usually we have more funds, um, than we spend. So as we spend, they approve my report, I move a part of which we have spent to revenue. So right now, you see that the revenue aspect, um, if you look at, um. You look at CPI, uh, Community Public Infrastructure. The amount budgeted you find is always higher than what you have. On the actual side. That's just because, you know, the entries I have there now are entries for Q one and Q two, which Maka have already. They've already looked through the expenses and they've said it's okay. For Q three. I've made my reports. And until Maka comes out to say. Changes or change that, I usually do not, do not raise those entries, even though I need to, I want to change that now. But that's just why I said this report, this, this part of the report. Balances out over time, just a timing difference part of it.
So to clarify, we have the money in the bank account, but we can't move it into a revenue until Maka approves our spending.
We have spent the money, that's why you have the expenses showing much bigger than the, than the revenue side.
Right.
They should actually match each other.
But we have to wait for Maka.
But we have to wait for, yes, for Maka.
For Maka, so we can move over.
Yeah, we can move it over to the revenue side.
Does that make sense to clarify? So we've got the money, it's in a bank account, but we can't move it to the revenue until Maka says we can.
More, more interest. So we get most of our funds once, once again. But we would have spent from January to June. Do, I think we got our CPI in August. But we have accumulated, spent money and all of that until we get it. Now we have spent some money too for gas tax, but we have not received our gas tax opt-in now.
Okay, further questions from council?
Just one comment, so it's a segue into, uh, since we are talking budget and money. Uh, just a reminder for, uh, council deliberations for our interim budget is scheduled for December sixth. Which is a Saturday after our Christmas party. Jenna will send out an invite reminder as well, and I don't believe you're going to be here. So we will ensure that we are zooming in and that you have sufficient, uh, sufficient time to review it. So we've taken an initial, uh, look at our budget and we met with the finance committee today with some recommendations. Uh, as well as some other work that we want to do on the budget. So by, and then we're going to meet with the finance committee again on Monday once. So Thursday, this Thursday, we're going to be meeting as the directors again. Look at where else we can increase revenue, decrease some expenses, fine tune it a bit, bring it back to the finance committee on Monday. So by Wednesday, if there's any other edits, we'll have the budget package to you by Wednesday. So you'll have some time to review it before the sixth. So that is our very, uh, hopeful timing that we're looking at. So if everybody can note, uh, or sorry, December sixth, or, and it'll be here in council. And we'll send you the information about the timing as well.
And then in a perfect world, are we shooting for the eighth and tenth of December for council approval of the budget?
Uh, yes, we are.
Yeah. They're just working backwards. We improve it on the tenth, the fifth is council's time to really discuss that. And then meanwhile, the finance committee will again meet next Monday. Okay? Perfect. Thank you, Stephen.
Yes.
Next, we have Charlotte is presenting on economic development and tourism update.
Sorry, Charlotte, just a minute. Okay. Um, so some of what's been happening since we've met. Um, we organized a small business week, October nineteenth to the twenty fifth. Uh, we had, um, a nominate your local business, uh, throughout the week. And we got three winners, please bottle tea, American, we take away coffee. Uh, we had a hundred and twenty-three submissions for that, uh, nominate your local business, so it was very popular. We also, uh, hosted the northernmost host training with five attendees, as you can see in the picture here. Everybody smooshed in, uh, in the welcome center. So, uh, we couldn't fit everybody, um, and all what they had in the, uh, little, uh, Christian McLeod, uh, community room. But it all worked out. Um. We also had for this business week, a free Arctic market for vendors. It was very popular with, uh, seventeen vendors as well. Then we had, so we bid in February, last February, to host the NWT Tourism Conference, which. They hosted in November fourth to the sixth, very popular. They had nineteen, nine zero, nineteen attendees. Uh, it was great. Uh, I attended with Amanda, the, uh, event coordinator as well. Um, and we also bid for the TAC, the Tourism, uh, Association, uh, Tourism Industry Association of Canada. To host their conference and they, uh, did it in November seventh. We sponsored those events, um, the NWT Tourism Conference, uh, as far as the airport shuttles. As well as the town tours on the first day and a cultural night that was well received with northern games, demonstrations and drummers and dancers. And the TAC conference, we did sponsor the breakfast as well as the shuttles to the airport. For the TAC conference, the town was well represented as I participated in the panel as well as Patricia DeVissin, uh, for a, another panel as well. We also participated, uh, both of Delta Business Trade Show, another the fifteenth. Uh, we had a booth as well as we organized the, uh, Arctic market. It was packed. That was the first time we were doing it upstairs, but it was packed with twenty-four vendors. Um, it was very popular because, um, we both for Delta Business Trade Show would give out coupons when you finish your tour in the trade show. That would give you twenty dollars off on anything on the Arctic market. So that worked out very well and vendors were very happy. Uh, we also hosted the Tourism Stakeholder Meeting November nineteenth, uh. Surprisingly, not that many people showed up, but interestingly, uh, people that did show up were not the one thing, regular ones. So we had ICC, um, we had Arctic Chalet, we have Tony Devlin representing GTC as well as his own business. Uh, so yeah, it was, it was interesting. Um, next one will be in February. Uh, then, uh, so that's a few pictures of the last Arctic market, uh, during the buffer Delta Trade Show. So Arctic Market, we hosted three this month, November first. The sixth was during the NWT Tourism Conference in the fifteen, and the next one will be December twentieth. Uh, the Christmas Craft Fair is organized by the Inuit Native Band, the fifth to the seventh. Uh, as CNAP is not organizing it this year, they took the lead on that. And us, it's just, as usual, just a Saturday on the December twentieth. Uh, we're still working on the sunrise festival happening January ninth to the eleventh. We have a few good sponsorship and I'm happy to report that we just got the grant from the Heritage Fund. A federal grant of seventeen thousand dollars. That was the first time the prime never applied and, uh, yeah, so that will help a lot. Uh, and of course, the eighteen, eighties during committee meetings, I've been meeting a lot with Peter as well to, uh. Get things running. I'm hoping by January, we can actually, uh, get, uh. Tickets out and early birds discounts and stuff like that, as well as, uh, we have a draft schedule right now, but we're working on it. Um, but yeah, um. Land projects, so the Inuit guy was still running it, um. Amanda, even coordinator, is, uh, going out and meeting with people. We had the shed done, uh, by contractor and shades for the boardwalk as well are ordered. Uh, and we just applied for the Kenor funding last Monday for several projects for twenty twenty-six. Um, depending on council decision. And finally, we're still working on filling up the marketing position, which taking a long time. We didn't have that many applications locally, that was the goal, uh, but unfortunately, we, we didn't get that many, uh, applications. So today, as of today. So today, as of today, the H R just posted, uh, to source money outside of Inukic. And also, uh, I'm seeing Jack Parrot, Councilman Parrot, wearing this beautiful hoodie. Uh, that was the town's contribution, the town design and, uh, sponsored the event, uh, the Geo Week that happened last Saturday, uh, by donating a few hoodies. So yeah, very busy mop.
Great, thanks, Charlotte. Questions, comments from council? Certainly lots going on.
Thanks.
Question, comment, thanks, Charlotte. Next, we have M three, infrastructure.
Good evening, everyone. Um, a couple of bits from the Department of Infrastructure. Uh, well, the last little while focused heavily on professional development. Uh, so we had some members of the ITL crew attend the N W T, N C W W A conference in Yellow Life, because they have to keep up with their certification, so they have continued education they have to do once every two years. Uh, the lead hand attended the Western Canada Operators Conference in Edmonton. And we have a team member also travel out to B C to take their class three water treatment plan course. And hopefully he will be taking the exam when he's back in town. Uh, the facilities team members are attending the Arena Level Two course this week, uh, they flew out today. And just like Cindy said earlier, we have a new team member, Michael Fraser, who has joined us from Saskatchewan and is our new maintenance coordinator. And then we're hoping we can lean on his background in civil engineering to help us out with some of the issues we have, uh, with the M S C and, and general facilities issues. Uh, so the facility might be busy, uh, that's one of the what we have been doing, so that's the boardroom downstairs. So they had a facelift for that room there, we took out the old board, it was repainted, installed a TV and computer system. So basically we can now have meetings and interviews and stuff like that downstairs. So that was in collaboration with the I T department. Uh, they also had, uh, a couple cosmetic repairs as well done at the M S C. So the sundog room was, uh, was also renovated, that was repainted. And, uh, the foyer, just by the, by the skates sharpening room there, so he does also repainted and all the cracks and, and, uh, and damages were also fixed. My, uh, team. Uh, I think I had this on last time, but obviously, but I couldn't present because we had issues with the, with the, with the screen, so I just left this in there so you can see what I had, um, what I put on there last week. So they did all that in the call, in the changing rooms at the M S C as well, and he did all that work. Capital projects, uh, this was the new truck we got, this was, this came back in September, but obviously I didn't get the chance to, to present this, so this is now here in town, I drove it up from Edmonton. Uh, so I budgeted, budgeted about a hundred thousand, the actual cost was ninety-seven, zero thirty-eight. And, uh, yep, it's here and now the team gets to use that when they need it. Uh, the community wildlife plan, the project for this was six hundred and fifteen, six hundred. We haven't expended anywhere on this particular project just yet. But, um, boundary A was already, was already awarded to a contractor and that was the work that was getting done on the, on the left. We also did tender boundaries B C D. Um, the tender result is back, but we just haven't, that hasn't come to council yet for an hour, for an hour. So that will probably come to council next, next cycle of meetings. This is fully funded, so, uh, this is not coming from town, town corporates. You still looking at it, Peter, or?
I'm sorry.
I can move on?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
This for boundary B is a plan to do brushing in that whole section to the south of the bypass.
That's the export now, just administration project.
So, uh, we put this plan together with, uh, consultation with, uh, I can't remember really now, one of the consultants and contractors we worked with on this. So they provide expertise around, uh, fuel treatment, uh, because that's kind of outside of our typical wheelhouse. So boundary B, what we did is we identified that for crown spacing is called. So basically it takes a look at, uh, uh, coniferous trees and we reduce the crown space and the actual what content of coniferous trees within a specific area. So what we want to do with this is reach out to partner organizations to work with them to do harvesting within the area as well. Um, so it's kind of like a different approach we're taking for clearance on this one. So we looked at protecting, uh, infrastructure through phase one, uh, protecting the water treatment area, uh, taking it down not to mineral soil, but a significant amount of brushing. I won't call it parking lot, but it's, close. Uh, the second part is doing the B C D, the remainder of the peripherals on the, uh, on the boundaries. Um, and then we're looking to do that next phase throughout either probably the winter, like this upcoming winter is when we're looking at it. So we've been working with a couple of different organizations just to work with some of their members, some of their people, just if we could, uh, uh, open up specific areas and identify. So we have the whole parameters for what to do from that consultant. So they say you have to have the X amount of space in between different types of species. Um, and then we combine this with the, the final phase, which is going to be looking outside of town, protecting the area all the way up to the airport. Um, we got a couple of meetings set up later this week, actually, with, um, the, uh, satellite station. Uh, it's just to identify how we can kind of link different anchor points as they're called, so like different legs and different geographic features to kind of reduce the costs overall for what we're doing. Um, we've come up some innovative things, like can speak more during my presentation for the Fire Chiefs Association Conference, um, where we talked about doing bulos, like those lines along with, uh, burning, submerscripted burning. So there's a few different options that we can do, uh, just to reduce the overall call, cost and finally implement that last phase of it, so. But that's the overall plan, we just been, we had to redesign quite a bit because it was a pretty simplified approach to the plan when we first inherited it. It was basically just doing a single line parallel about two hundred meters in from the, uh, the bypass route. We said that's not very effective, so we went through this, we identified areas of, that we want to protect first and really, really, really spent some time on it. It's an eight-year project overall, so we wanted to do it, wanted to do it right instead of spending all the money on a single thing, we're going to build a new subdivision, so that's kind of what we.
Excellent. Long story short, it'd be sort of thinning rather than necessarily.
That, yeah, yeah, so different approaches, different field, field locations.
That's boundary B in particular is.
Yeah, big spot, no, we can't bulldoze that entire area, that would be.
The good, the bad news on boundary B is this is
In the community plan.
The area, if we're going to do a town expansion, that's the next area that needs to be expanded.
Yeah.
So in the end, it's going to be a lot more than just thinning.
Yeah.
Overall, yeah.
Thinking of the, the whole, the whole area is much larger than where we're going to develop future subdivisions.
Uh, we saw the site, the electric fence, the budget standard was about one, one million. We've actually, actually spent about six hundred, I think it's nine at this point. Uh, unfortunately, the estimated completion of our project is now next year. Um, they're currently still working. Um, out there, they've closed the entire, the entire landfill is closed in now. Uh, so they're installing the barbed wire on top of the fence and welding all the brackets and getting ready for electrification. Well, currently, uh, Phoenix fans currently only having some personnel issues, so we might be, this might end up going to next year with the, where they've been told that this has to be completed latest first week, second week of April, because it has to be energized before the bears wake up. Otherwise, we're going to experience some, some sort of damage like we did already, so, so yeah, that's the plan. Uh, townwide playground provision, okay, I, I presented on this last week too, but obviously, I mean, last cycle of council meetings, but, uh, like I said, the screen wasn't working, so I decided to put this back on because of the next slide, which is the results we got from the tender. We just wanted to go over this very quickly, so we did, uh, council did approve last year during the budget to have all the playgrounds inspected. Um, and so we could take a look at what those look like and what we need to do. And this were the, the key takeaways from the inspections that were done at the time. So most playgrounds are in fairly good condition. If you need major attention, uh, no site is fully accessible. Upgrades are needed across all locations, missing safety signage at all sites, surface compacted slash unsafe, needs renewal for impact protection, drainage problems at several locations, minor equipment repairs, cause vandalism cleanup required. Uh, we currently don't have any maintenance slash special logs in place, which Michael will be putting in place as soon as he starts his work full-time. In terms of priority actions, um, we need to improve accessibility, we need to improve signage, we need to improve surface drainage and implement a regular maintenance program to try to, um, keep the parks in good shape. So I, I presented that again because of the tenders, so we did have three tenders out there. Um, so we, we ended up with the project for this year with a design for command, for command playground division project. And that went out to tender, we got only one bid and it came in at six ninety, which is way higher than I had expected. Uh, so what I've currently, of course, this currently on that conversation and obviously council will make a decision as to what direction we want to go. But what I'm thinking is we'll probably split this over two years or work with engineers to make it, uh, to try to reduce the cost, maybe have the impact surfaces just around the playground, just around the swing set and around the climbing structure instead of all over the entirety of the playground. So those kind of conversations are what I'm currently having with the engineers. But obviously, um, we're open to, to hear what the feedback council has and what, what approach you'd like us to take going into next year with that project. Uh, the four treatment services, just like Brian was talking about, we've got two bids when that closes, one came in at six ninety and the other came in at one seventy-nine, one fifty-six. So obviously that's going to come to also at some point for award, once Brian gives us the go-ahead. The Inuvik Lagune Improvement Project, uh, for the construction phase, we got a low one bid and that came in at three point two one seven. So all of this will come to council, probably the next council cycle or, or early next year. Um, I think one bid, I one tender, I have omitted on there and I guess that's because it didn't go for public tender. We reached out to local contractors, so we reached out to our four local contractors for the demolition of the two properties we got on Jacques Z. And we got two bids, two bids came in, uh, the lowest, I can't remember the highest, but the lowest of the two was, uh, forty thousand dollars each, uh, to clear the lot, demolish the units, clear the lot and have them ready for sale. So I didn't put that, I forgot about that, I just remembered as I was talking. Um, thank you for your time and then any questions from council?
Thanks, Daniel. Questions, comments from council? We'll give Daniel's report. Because we had some during it, but nothing further. Okay, thanks, Daniel. And before, Inuvik Works.
Good evening, mayor, councillor, staff, guests. So Inuvik Works has been really, um, quite steady and busy the last while. So in October, let's skip one. In October, we diverted, uh, two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven pounds from the landfill. A total to date diverted was fifteen thousand five hundred and eighteen pounds. About seven times our original annual goal is what we've projected or predicted when we first, uh, started out. Uh, October store sales were at seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three. Um, the projection is that for this month it will be lower, it's been a little bit slower. And, um, we're slight, we were slightly below our projected point of, uh, seven thousand five hundred that we had thought we would take in for October. Three crew, crew members and three potential crew members have started the Trades Essential Program at the Aurora College Mobile Trades Unit. Um, this last week and this week, they're working on pipes. Um, there are five of them, uh, actually attending and taking the course, um, and have been doing a really great job and they're really enjoying the hands-on components. And they've come back and said, I could be a plumber's helper, this is really great. So they're really, um, enjoying the trades that they're learning. Um, we've got, uh, five thousand dollars gender equality grant funding to do some, uh, uh, one day workshop of four rotating workshops of different trades. Um, so we're just, we just got the funding, so we'll be looking at, um, doing, um, one workshop will be mechanics, one will be, uh, plumbing, one will be small engine and one will be carpentry. And so it'll be one day and they'll rotate through, um, four little mini workshops. And so we'll be looking for people to, um, to facilitate, um, those workshops. We have, uh, three crew members that completed their, uh, chainsaw safety course today. And some of the highlights, um, we attended the East Three Secondary, uh, Career Fair. Seventy-one youth visited our booth and of those seventy-one, uh, youth, twenty knew exactly what they wanted to do as a career. Twenty-two had a couple of career choices they were thinking of and thirteen knew what they liked to do, but didn't have any idea what career that would be. And sixteen had no uh, indication or idea of what they might do for a career. So it was really interesting to talk to the youth and, and, uh, um, help them consider their career path. One of the projects that the crew just finished up was helping at the ICC Wellness Camp. Um, they, uh, the camp had received all of the furniture for their main building and all of the, uh, other cabins. And so the crew spent time going out and putting together, in their words, Ikea furniture. I'm sure, I don't know if it was from Ikea, but they had to assemble every piece of furniture. So they took the packages out of the C can, put them in the buildings and did a map, in their words, of putting furniture together, because there was no words, there was just a map. These are their words, not mine. Um, and so they followed the map and put things together and they had a good laugh because, you know, if anybody's put this type of stuff together, you put it together and you got something left over and you go, where does that go? And you gotta kind of backtrack and figure out where it goes or piece A and B look identical, but if you put them in the, uh, reversed orders, it ends up upside down or something. And so they had a good giggle figuring this out and, and getting it done. But it was a really good, uh, skill building activity for the crew, uh, to do that type of work. And then, of course, they, uh, cleaned up the site when they were done. So some of the things that we accomplished, um, the next to new partnership with East Three Secondary Environmental Club. Uh, we've been, uh, partnering, they've been using some of our materials, it's been quite, uh, an interesting partnership. Mentorability of partnership with East Three Secondary, uh, Support Program. Um, there, as you know, we do the, uh, mentorability, um, out of Inuvik Works. And so people can sign up as mentors and then there's mentees that sign up. And the high school is looking into the future for some of their students who may need that type of support, um, because they have barriers or disabilities. And so, um, we've, uh, had a couple of meetings and discussions about what that might look like and what the, the resources and possibilities are. Um, Inuvik Works Crew, um, has been in partnership with East Three Secondaries, um, and Inuvik Native Band cultural activities. So the crew has gone over and helped, um, chop wood, uh, clear paths, um, uh, helped with, uh, harvesting some animals, uh, to the Inuvik Native Band and just, uh, helping out with any other traditional programs that, uh, they have, that they might need some assistance with. We did a draw in store for a shopping spree and Margaret McGinnis won that shopping spree, so she was quite excited about that. She hasn't come and done her shopping yet, but we're setting up a date. And the Northern Canadian Tourism, uh, Round Table we were a part of and, and, uh, talked about accessibility. So what's coming up, um, National Child Day, we did a fifty percent children's, um, fifty percent of children's, uh, toys that, that just passed. December second, the, um, crews doing a food save course, all of them. Uh, December third through twelfth, they're doing the second part of the Trades Essential Course, which will be carpentry. And, uh, uh, February thirteenth, we're all going out to, um, Reindeer Station. It's part of some, um, traditional literacy funds that we received. And so we're going. It's part of some um, traditional literacy funds that we received. And so we're going out and um, just having a day. Um, out on the land and working on traditional literacy. And then in January, we're gonna do that gender equality trades workshop I talked about as well. And we're also doing the Northern Host. Um, training as well. Um, ITI is gonna come in and do it with our group specifically. Um, just because the, when they did it uh, earlier uh, last month, um, our crew wasn't available, they were busy with other things. And so they um, said that they would come and do it just for us. So this is just some of the pictures of the ARI um, partnership. Um, they've uh, been working in East Three Secondary with the Environmental Club and at the library. And so they're using some of our materials and fabrics from the store and creating things. And um, uh, Gillian from ARI has uh, really uh, been working with us to make sure that. The participants have the materials that they need. The one thing that I did put in the report that I want to talk about is we have a steady um, base of volunteers now too. So we have three that come in on a pretty regular basis and, and help out. And then we have some that just come in whenever they're available. So it's been really nice to see the community step forward in, in that way and, and help out. They help keep us organized in the chaos of our, of our work. So it's really nice to have somebody come in and organize a certain part. Um, of uh, our items, I'll say, our donations, basically. So uh, and this is just showing um, some of the uh, participants in the Aurora College Essential Trades Program. When they're working on piping, so they all have their own workstation and they're all working on different projects, very hands-on projects every day. So um, skill development experiences have been the focus um, over the last while and will continue to be. Um, as we try and get everyone meeting their goals. So each per, each Anubit Crew participant came in. With some particular goals um, uh, for their career path. And so we're trying to get as many of them. Uh, on that path as possible through different skill um, development experiences as well as work experiences. Any questions?
Great, thanks Patricia. Questions, comments, council? Councillor Gillis?
That's really amazing, you know, I'm a fan. So um, being seven K in revenue. Um, from donated items is amazing. I'm just curious, does that budget include like what they make on when they do work?
No, that's stored, stored completely. I haven't, I haven't compiled that, but I can for next council.
Okay, it would be curious to say, because I know they're getting hired a lot by me for sure. Hopefully everyone else too.
Yeah, I, I can certainly, thanks. I hadn't thought of that, but I certainly will compile that information.
And then my next question or just comment or something to think about Patricia is you said that you have like two that show up regularly. I hope that there's like, you know, you're doing so much work with them and you're building them up that as they become strong employees. Or, you know, an independent and on their own two feet and they're showing up every day, that maybe there's a transition into acquiring them jobs. And then that way, those spaces, they move into like a career path, whether that be a, I know that. IDC put out a big post to jobs or some labor positions and things like that within it. I'm not saying specifically with just them, but I'm sure there are others. So just to keep that mind frame like intact, just to say that. If you do have two strong ones and I know that you'd hate to lose them, except transitioning them over and maybe opening up those positions there. Will keep the program going and the intent behind it, I think, that's what I wanted to say.
That's a really good point, councillor. And for those of you who don't know, our funding is based from um, April first to March thirty-first. So basically, we have till March thirty-first to get this round out employed. And then hopefully funding for the next round, because it's basically wage subsidy funds through ECNI and other places. Is the bulk of that wage that pays, or the bulk of the funds that pays their wages. And so we do definitely have a timeline and that's why the skill development, you know, first we were sort of getting used to showing up on time and all that good stuff. And now skill development and then um, hopefully some specific um, job skills in the area that they've chosen. So, and we've got some mentorship uh, lined up for people who kind of know what they want to do and to try and get them out in those fields. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Great, thanks Patricia. No further questions? All right, next we have Parks and Recreation Place.
Janet, it's just the arrows. Excellent. Uh, good evening to Mayor and Council. Here's the Parks and Recreation, Recreation update, excuse me, uh, for the month of November. That being said, um, the KPIs do come from the month of October, just because we have to compile them at the end of the month. Um, starting with our fitness center, uh, everything's ticking up, um, nice. Our uh, dailies are up as well as our weeklies and our months. Uh, so we can see as we've been transitioning into the colder weather, people are looking for things to do inside, um, getting fit. Uh, we're looking to run some specials here into December. So if you need Christmas gifts for those ones that you love that like to like working out, um, those will be coming out shortly. Um, as well, over on the aquatic side, one point to mention, um, is that the rest of the stats are from October, but the uh. Lane swim and parenting talk at the very top. Um, has just been brought back at the beginning of November, so I didn't want to compile some of those numbers. Uh, Jake Weems, our aquatic supervisor, did an excellent job of bringing that back and we can see the numbers reflect that. Um, the, the core group of people that like coming to that are certainly happy that it's back. And so we're happy to be able to offer that. Um, to speak to Stephen's point a little bit earlier on with the uh, capital or with the uh, financial update. We are down a little bit on revenue for the pool, but we are expecting a large check from the swim team this week and a couple of pool sponsorships. Um, that still need to be collected on, so hopefully that will um, level up those numbers a little bit. Uh, just to speak to that, overall the library side, um, the numbers are turning out a little bit this month. Um, the adults are, are down overall, um, obviously tourists as we see less of them in town. But one figure that I did want to include was the use of the Vicki Billingsley Community Room and that in October. Um, ended up being used six times. So that's six uses that either uh, we didn't have space for at the MSC. Or that contacted the library uh, outright. And so it's good to see that getting some use uh, as well. Uh, moving on to our looking back, uh, Daniel and Charlotte uh, stole most of my thunder with this, but we'll go over some of it again. Um, so the, the big one for us, um, in October and November was the IMHA Hockey School. So I'd really like to thank council for their, their donation of the ice for that. Um, I don't think without that it would have happened and it wouldn't have been as big of a success as it was. There was a hundred and forty kids across various age groups that got the chance to skate with ex-NHLers and motivational speakers. Um, there was both on-ice sessions as well as dry land sessions. And so I think the kids got a really good experience. Um, and it all culminated, I guess depending kind of on Saturday and Monday, Saturday night was the drummers and dancers. Um, as well as the motivational speakers, that's the picture in the top left, that was held in the community hall. Uh, that was an absolutely fantastic event to get everybody together for. And then on the Monday night, uh, when it actually finished, they had a. Skill showcase, so they got to play a couple of games and show off everything that they learned during the week. So that was a fantastic event, happy to, to host that one and have a small part in that. Um, as Daniel mentioned, um, on the bottom left there is the sundog room improvements, so fresh coat of paint. Um, make it a little more inviting, some of the, the cosmetic issues on the walls and things like that, um. It does see a lot of use and so it's just important that we keep up on uh, you know, maintaining the looks of it. Um, as Charlotte mentioned, we hosted the NWT Tourism Conference. Um, it was a fantastic event as well, always great to work with Charlotte and her team on those things, everything seems to go so seamlessly. Um, and I believe the organizers were, were happy as well, so that's always a win. Um, moving down to the Bullford Delta Trade Show, that was spoke about as well, but again, just another great event. Um, busy weekend at the MSC, we always like it when there's, there's people out and about and, and there's things for them to do. The Geo Week event that just passed, thank you again to, to council for the donation of that. Um, that was an excellent one for both adults and kids to get out and see some neat technology. I don't know if anybody saw the, the map on the ground. And the, the drone footage and the different things, it was pretty neat to, to see everything that goes into that. Uh, we were happy to, to have them as well. Uh, from the recreation and the HR side, we actually also attended the um, East Three Secondary Career Fair. Um, that picture on the top right, um, you can see Travis from Utilidor Crew on the very end, he got up and uh, got to speak about his experience in the trades. And I believe he was also presented with his red seal certificate. So it was uh, nice to be there uh, for him as well. Uh, we had quite a few people stop by the booth and so there was a nice mix. Um, I know Adam had a couple of people interested in accounting, I had some people interested in summer camps and casual positions and things like that. And then there was also a number of students that stopped by and uh, spoke about the trades. So that was a, a well-spent day there. Looking forward, um, we are obviously with the snow outside, heading into our Christmas season. Um, that kicks off this weekend with the various Christmas parties, I believe GNWT is this weekend. And then IRC uh, will be next weekend following ours. Uh, the Christmas parade is scheduled for December fourteenth and the kids' communities' Christmas party will follow that. Um, so we are, uh, there will be gifts for um, all the kids in the community. Um, the poster is there, um, everybody can register uh, just by responding to the email there and we'll make sure everybody gets a gift. And there'll be a few activities as well and hopefully a, a good afternoon for kids and parents. Um, the staff holiday party is December fifth and I just wanted to put that one on there to remind councillors that uh, you're invited and we'd love to see you there. Even though there's budget deliberations the next day, but. Um, and the last one is the Light Up The Town uh, Christmas light decorating contest. So that's one that we do annually, there'll be prizes for that, there's a couple of different categories, um. If you can't decorate your house and you have a cabin or something to that effect, um, you can enter those as well. And so lots of things going on uh, throughout the Christmas season and into the new year. Does council have any questions?
Great, thanks Trace. Councillor Gillis?
Um, Trace, uh, can you let us know if there's any issues with the ice? Because I've seen some very disturbing images of our ice at the edges and. That looks funny, weird. I don't know enough about ice, but it looks not good.
That's a, a great question, councillor Gillis. So not necessarily um, with the ice as a whole, there is some spaces where they're having issues. Uh, maintaining depth, but I think where the images came from was there was an incident late last week on Sunday. Where the Zamboni blew a coolant hose. And by the time the gentlemen were able to relax, react quick enough, excuse me, there was a little bit of damage done to the ice. And so that was um, the arena closure that happened last week, we had to take some time to remedy that and make sure it was safe. So I don't know that there's issues with ice as the whole, but we do experience some of those smaller spot type issues. Um, the maintenance team does a great job of slushing those in and conditioning and kind of keeping them up to par and making sure they're safe.
Any further questions, comments from council? Trace, I know this is your last council meeting. And Friday's your last day and I just want to thank on behalf of myself and council, you've done a great job. We're, we're sorry you're moving on, we're glad you're not leaving the community, but uh, yeah, you're gonna be missed and uh, a big uh. Some big shoes to fill, so um, but thanks for stepping in when you did and you, you've done a great job. Uh, both as your previous job and slipping into the director's position and uh, just want to say that all of us really appreciate it.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to council, you've all been wonderful to work with and I look forward to seeing everybody out in the community and still enjoying the events.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Protective Services, Brian.
Well, I didn't fit, um. So we have some new uh, reporting mechanisms. So what we've done is we've moved all of our databases over to uh. From a, more of a uh, sheets, I guess we were using Google Sheets, to an actual proper database system. What it allows us to do is get real-time data off of all of our statistics and gives us some pretty interesting uh, numbers off of this as well. One of the other things we can do is we can integrate this into the web, website so that we can provide real-time statistics as we report. We have to be careful what we were going to be implementing this because we need to fuzz it to a certain extent just to maintain privacy, especially if people connect incidents to the specific types of calls. Um, we started off with the incident report through an fire department, we're moving on to municipal enforcement after this. So municipal enforcement's still like, there are kind of old data systems that we had to pull stuff out of. But what this does is gives them pretty good analytics to determine how we're performing. Um, some of the numbers that we wanted to pull on this, and this is just, there's actually nine additional ones because this captured October to current date. We've been going from mid-month to mid-month for reporting periods or council presentations. Um, so there's an additional nine responses along with five additional, five of those are structured fires actually, I mean, it was a busy structured fire month and uh, end of uh, September. Um, but what it does is just gives us some, some pretty good things on here. So um, some of the things on here, it's okay, you read it now. So uh, responses are required multiple people. Um, when we send the duty officers, they're typically responding alone for alarm calls. Um, but if it's not, it represents a more serious call or training, um, but typically more serious events itself. Um, one of the other metrics that we can track in this, because we track time from dispatch to time on scene. Um, this is our actual annual statistics, statistic. And what we've done is we've pulled out uh, anything that's out of town, like a, a highway accident or. Rescue or things like that that are way longer than expected. But within town responses over the last year, across a hundred and fifty calls. A little more than a hundred and fifty calls, we're averaging five minutes from the initial report to actually being on scene at the, the, wherever the, the emergency scenes itself. Um, we track this data directly from our dispatch center, so Parkland County provides us this kind of statistics as we radio in, so they're doing all the tracking and we just have to format it. But this goes into the incident reports that our duty officers and responders provide. Um, out of all these calls, it's actually fifteen fire responses that were directly fire-related that actually involve fire, flames, smoke, on scene. Um, some of the other interesting statistics, we can determine the number of the specific days that we have uh, responses on as well. Um, overall, we found that Saturdays are the biggest time, Fridays, within the last reporting period, we're, we're pretty busy as well, but it gives us some unique statistics as well. As we start to flesh this out and get some more analytics from this, we can also determine what allied agencies respond with us on a regular basis. Uh, right now, RCMP is in the lead, we know that for sure. Uh, they've responded to about twenty percent of our calls, depending on what it is, they don't come out on alarm calls all the time, but they certainly do come out on any incendiary fires, any disturbances. Anything like that as well. They're often there for medical responses too. AMS is a close second, uh, and then followed by GNWT and the structure. So we're hoping to get more of this data where we can actually present it to the public as well as council on a regular basis. And it's no work that's required on our part, we basically just choose the dates for the data reporting and it spits out these images. We have to do some cutting and pasting just until uh, we figured out exactly how to pull the data and put it into a separate uh, uh, presentation like this. But for integration onto a website, our public report, and it's, it's pretty, pretty uh, interesting. So this, this shows our, excuse me, from our October, November uh, to date reports. We also have. Can you move me on one slide, please? Ah, here we go. So twenty twenty-five summary, so we have actually one hundred and sixty-eight responses to date. Um, what this one also shows us is the, the timeline overall. So you can see down below, it's a bit of a garbled mess for the detail. But what in, in the normally shows is how often we get responses on the same days. What we find is they're unpredictable, it often lines up with weekends, uh, and uh, just depending on what the overall incident is. But we tend to give them multiple calls on uh, weekend days. Um, but it gives a pretty good visual statistic about how our types of responses are distributed. There are more fire responses in the, the, the summer and fall with a few different incidents that we had. Um, and then everything else is kind of, more or less evenly spread throughout the year, but it kind of shows that we do often get like the ones where you see four down at one time. That means we've had four responses on a single day. Um, so depending on what the actual response is, it can be anything ranging from a number of alarm calls to a heavy medical response. There's one day in June that was uh, pretty tough, we had a, we had some very, very high test calls. Um, I can't go into a lot of detail for privacy reasons or the nature of some of the medical responses. Uh, but it was four back-to-back same day that were, were uh, um. Pretty involved, high QD is what we want to call them. So we're hoping that, we are, we're not hoping, we're gonna get this out from municipal enforcement as well. Because we found we have even more data there. Uh, parsing through this data and actually pulling in usable statistics from it was difficult in format that we have. So now we're gonna be able to just provide this across. So now we're going to be able to just provide this across the board to everybody. Um, and that's the overall intention with this. So we want to be public about what we do, in particular, some of those stats that we're really proud of, that five-minute response time. We want to make sure that we can get there, keep people safe, and a lot of that results in uh it comes from good training and uh succession plan. So this is where we're pulling information right now. So we have the total request for service from municipal enforcement. Over the same time period, they did eighty-one responses and requests for service. Uh, it's kind of mixed between animal control and patrols uh along with traffic intervention uh and then assists other that also includes uh assisting their CMP on responses, assisting IFD and assisting their CMP on things as well. Most of the ballpark taxi work is completed in early mid uh September, so that was most for taxi interventions. Uh, and we haven't had too much overall at times because people have been inspected. We have uh uh basically all the 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 safety uh other aspects have been completed in September for renewal. So starting next month, we're going to have the same kind of uh quality of report for municipal enforcement as well. We just have to transfer the database itself to the to the new air tables uh database system. So, any questions about the statistics, another reporting as of right now? For quality of the update, um we have, we've been pretty busy. Um, it's been a very busy training fall in general. Uh, we completed our, we had a course we've been running since the start of the spring. Um, NFP ten oh two driver operator, so we had the evaluation came up, we completed the evaluations. Uh, eight personnel completed, eight personnel passed. We have two or eight new driver operators that can drive fire trucks, operate the pumps, and basically get the big rigs up to uh to fire balls. So we're pretty proud of that because that's a a very tough one to run internally. We're the only fire department in the Northwest Territories that is operating that internally. Uh, everybody else has to bring an outside evaluator, so or sorry, outside instructors, so we've reduced the cost quite significantly from this as well. Um, our recruit train, recruit training program, we completed that in early October. Uh, we can finish it up with our two-weekend RTP recruit training program. We had ten new personnel that completed the program and are onboarded with us. Uh, they're doing great. We're getting them up to a lot of responses, a lot of training events. Uh, we're getting them to community events as well, so we're really excited about that, just to bring out new people. It's a constant churn within our department and within the town, so we try to keep on top of that. Um, so the, and we could, it wasn't Officer One completed yet, but we did the incident command portion of the Officer uh One course. So we had the same evaluation that came off, he delivered the this course itself. Um, so additionally, personnel that there's kind of been a crossover that did in this incident command training, so teaching first response, initial actions on a scene. Did we do a a couple of days of classroom training with it, and then we went out into the field and did two full days, three full days, I think, of uh of work out in the field at various locations throughout town. We did our, we have, right now, we have four people enrolled in NFP ten thirty-three Fire Investigator. We just started that through a partnership with the Office of the Fire Marshal. So two, and it's actually going to be five by the end of this, most likely, because I confirmed with the OFM that we will probably get a third position on this. So two of us already have our level one. We're going to complete our level two concurrently with uh with this group. Basically stay, oh, actually just slightly ahead of them. Um, and then the other three are going to start at level one and complete that with the Office of the Fire Marshal and other fire departments, and then join us for uh for the second part of that as well. Um, and then we, the other training we've done is we failed the training plan uh for our new Municipal Enforcement Peace Officer position. Um, we'll get to that in a second here as well. Uh, within I IT, um, there's only two more workstations to set up. We made some pretty good progress on that. Um, Mitch is going, whoo, it's finally finished. We're just doing some line of repairs and stuff like that. Um, but we're pretty happy that we got that one out. Um, the vo- phone system is completed now. Um, the cell phones are being assigned. We got the last of them in, took a bit for those to actually arrive with the cannon post drag. But they're in, entered into our management system, so we have iPhones that are being assigned to various personnel or to all personnel that need cell phones within the municipality. We have to be able to track and manage those directly through a man, uh like a mobile device management service. Uh, so it's pretty nice because we, beyond tracking, we can turn apps go on it, we can push a lot of updates at it. People aren't using their personal accounts, they're using work-based accounts that improve security and privacy all through it as well. Um, municipal enforcement, so we completed uh peace officer interviews. We did that today. Um, and we are prepared to make an offer on this right now, uh which was going to tie into our our training and development plan. Um, following the bylaw update, we were able to provide new notifications and service to uh derelict crop and abandoned property owners. We did twelve warnings that were actually delivered and posted on properties. There's a few of them that we are pursuing directly with the property owners because they're uh good ones that have been receptive to things in the past and have decided to work with them instead of tacking the nose to their door. But we're expecting some movement on this. We're waiting for the statutory requirement to be completed, and then we're going to follow that up with action. Um, so we should see some uh some definite movement on those within the next couple of weeks outside, so. We'll see if we can get into some of the more of that, and some of them were were quite obvious in town, so. Uh, but thank you for approving that because it's given us a lot of tools that our disposal has been able to use. Uh, throughout the fire department, uh I attended, myself and Stefan actually attended the uh uh Fire Chiefs Association uh conference. It's a learning symposium, as MACA calls this, as a partnership with ECC, MACA, and the OFM. Um, where we basically go uh to Yellow Lake, work with other fire chiefs throughout the territory, and then we do a number of different training opportunities as well. Um, we identified a number of different funding opportunities. Um, our training, our regular NFP training is going to be uh covered. We're trying to determine what that breakdown is going to be with the with the Office of Fire Marshal. So I've been uh collecting our expenses and uh been in regular contact with them since then about double or minimum, so we have a pretty good understanding of what will be covered. Uh, so we'll be able to get some of the expenses that we've already incurred reimbursed. Uh, we did a session and of of like a full course on trauma-exposed professionals. Uh, it was, it was through Wounded Warriors. We've put uh to start a partnership with Wounded Warriors through the Fire Chiefs Association. Uh, it's, we want to bring this to other organizations within the territories as well. Um, it's a different approach to it. It's a very effective approach, we found. Um, and it's basically, there's a a lot that goes into it. Uh, we're not prepared to be able to teach that right now or deliver it right now because there's additional training and one that's needed, but uh for the 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 session we did was on trauma-exposed professionals in leadership positions. Uh, we found it very valuable. Um, it was a really good program, and it was done, it's an evidence-based and scientific-based approach to uh critical stress management, so we really happened to get that opportunity. Um, we had a quite a few discussions with ECC about our renewals and our progress on the WUI program that we were receiving funding for. Um, so there's going to be a new application in January for the following GNWT fiscal year. Uh, they're happy with the progress. They're happy with what we're doing on that, and uh it sounds like we are going to be approved. Uh, we are very happy with this because that's an additional three hundred thousand, while probably ended up being two hundred and seventy-five thousand a year in funding. Uh, some of these activities are for dual-use activities, additional funding that we can use for equipment that benefits the region as well as the municipality. And then uh we get the additional personnel that we can use full-time, including bringing up databases such as what we're introducing as well. So we've been running with that, making a lot of progress with it. Um, what we also did is we did an SAG review and update. Uh, we completed that. We did, I did it concurrently with the uh ten twenty-one Officer Program uh to incorporate some of the changes that we're making with that. It had been a quite a while since our SAGs have been updated and fully reviewed, uh basically how we do things on operational responses. Um, so we've updated them for our actual practices. Uh, we're reviewing that, we're rolling it out. We rolled out with the officers last two weeks ago. We're rolling out with the rest of the membership of the fire department this week. Um, and then we're going to be training with them throughout the rest of the December on implementation of this. Uh, through the WUI program, uh we reached, started every, completed every, multiple communities. We've made contact with every single uh forested community within the the our region. Uh, we've been sent a monthly training coordination schedule with them to work with SAOs as well as the fire chiefs in each community, and this is our obligation through that WUI program that we've the Wild Intergrain Interface Program and that funding. Uh, we did uh some community plans. We determined where some of their uh water points are. We've collected data and we're about to map that for them. Uh, and that's what our staff members doing on that over like for December so that we can hit the ground running come January. Um, what's coming up? Got a lot of things actually. So our hydrant access route drive, we've done it some additional. We focused a lot of our training for the past few weeks on hydrant root accesses as well as improving visibility on those as well, so continuing on with that uh capital project that we have uh for that. Um, we're going to be reinforcing the access routes and especially after this most recent snow and working with property owners to uh help them understand that their their obligations under the bylaw. Uh, we're running with our early dog license renewal in December. Uh, we're going to start promoting that in consultation with uh our communications department and pushing that up so that we get additional dogs registered and microchipped. Um, our Red Cross, we're doing Red Cross Wellness Remote First Aid Instructor renewal. We have that coming up in two weeks. Uh, we are doing check stops and safety patrols. We're hoping to bring back the candy cane check stuff with our CMP. Uh, we're going to be coordinating that with them over the next week. We have some meetings set up. Uh, and we'll be cracking that out and hopefully getting getting out there to give out some some tickets that might be a little bit sweeter. Um, and then we had, we've also implemented a new municipal enforcement uh patrol schedule. So what that does is sets up dedicated patrols throughout the day. We're guaranteed to have two patrols for two hours at critical times. That's at the start of school, uh schoolwork, at lunch, and then after school at work as well. Uh, so it's two hours of patrols to coordinate with that. Um, it'd be less patrol statistics and more about what they've done on the individual patrols themselves. So we've decided to do this with a static patrol schedule, just because we found that's going to work out better with a new uh staff member coming on. Uh, provides more equitable distribution with managing employees with multiple responsibilities. Uh, it gets us out in the street uh on a regular basis. We're also working with other departments, prepped for Sunrise Festival. We're collecting pallets right now. We're working on other events, including the Christmas Parade. Uh, we want to have a pretty good Christmas, pretty safe and 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 effective and fun uh Christmas holidays. Um, around some financial reporting, I didn't put the statistics up on here, but we uh we've been quite successful on our uh false alarm and nuisance alarm billing. Um, we have actually quadrupled our revenue targets for that. We did it as a disincentive to organizations, uh but what we found is we're getting some pretty good cost recovery on that as well. Uh, so we initially budgeted fifteen thousand dollars annually. Uh, we're sitting at about forty-five thousand dollars as of the uh the 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 last uh report, uh and we're about to add another ten thousand dollars uh in additional uh uh invoices as soon as I get them in this week. Um, so we've been quite successful on that. Um we're identifying new revenue streams with this as well, because there's all sorts of opportunities within emergency services to increase that. We can work with insurance companies, uh and this is where we're not going to be going after individual property owners or anything like that. We find that the best way to increase revenue streams is by insurance companies uh and commercial property owners. Um, make them be responsible for their properties uh and for their uh the 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 buildings that they own, so. All right. All I have except this, because we got a lot of things going on as well. So a number of different things, whether it's community initiatives that we're out in the public. Uh, safety patrols uh out at the uh the school. We, Fire Prevention Week, we focused on youth education at the uh the 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 school as well with them. Possible of our training, our tabletop exercises, our responses, uh and we rescue the cat. All right. We stabilized the situation while our colleagues at NTPC came and did the actual drive, but we are very proud within micro support cap rate. I'll leave that up there, but my next one is just going to be any questions from Council. Glad to take them.
Thanks, Ryan. Questions, comments from Council? Jeffrey Rivera.
If this was your question, but I just wanted to make a general comment to all the directors. One thing that clearly comes through is all the amazing work that's being done by our town staff. So I commend you as directors and all of the staff working under you for the very good job you guys have been doing. I think our community is pretty top-notch, seeing all the stuff we have going on and all the things coming up and all the training and all the, you know, everything we have going on. Great job.
Thank you. Okay. I know everybody else could feel the same way. But thank you. Honestly, I'm going to pass on all of this stuff because it means a lot. They're very dedicated and proud of the work they do, so.
It shows. It comes through.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, thanks, Ryan. Good job. Information items. Um, I've just got two very quick ones. Uh, delivered a presentation today to the Senate Committee on DND Procurement. And um had a little session last week with some of the local business people on what we would want to tell the Senate Committee, so that happened today from four twenty to roughly five twenty. Was myself, uh Grand Chief Blake, and the mayor from Yellowknife were kind of a northern delegation presenting to the DND. As as many of you know, the DND will probably be spending billions of dollars in Anubik as they modernize the new um northern operational support hub, the NORAN. They're calling it the NORAD Modernization Project. But out at the airport with the hangars and operational buildings, uh everything that's going to go there, the expansion of the accommodations. It will literally be billions of dollars by the time they're done, but that is over like a fifteen-year period. Um, so we have the opportunity to present to the procurement committee to try to see how we can make as much of that money stick in the north with the capacity that we have here instead of bringing up, you know, all the workers to get to work done and then having them go south again. We want uh, our our argument was uh people need to live in the Arctic. They're raising their families here. They're paying taxes, and we need to have that capacity here, so that that's what we were presenting on the weekend. Um, two members from the US Consulate office uh were in Anubik, one staff member and one diplomat, and met with them Saturday afternoon, gave them a tour of the town. They then met with Grand Chief Blake and uh I think they also met with the NEATAT this morning, and then they drove to Tuck on Sunday, and they were off to the um Geosience Forum in Yellowknife, but they wanted to because Anubik's part of their jurisdiction, they wanted to actually get up into the Arctic, so it was first time up for both of them. And then we had some discussions about the Arctic Development Dexville also, so um just two things that were involved in it in the last couple of days. Any further information items from anyone? We're good. Any council concerns to be raised? Seeing nothing? On camera items? So, I guess just.